You ready?
Yeah.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this Milford Board of Selectmen's meeting, May 7th, 2018. Before we get started tonight, I'd like to offer a moment of silence for the gentleman who passed away, Joseph C. D'Antonio. Just want to read a little bit about his background. Joe was a graduate of Milford High School, class of 1945, after which he enlisted into the Navy. He was a lifelong resident of Milford and loved serving the town. He was a town meeting member for 52 years and a longtime member of the Democratic Committee. He also served as chairman of the Finance Committee, a library trustee, and the geriatric authority. So if I could, please have a moment of silence for Joe D'Antonio. Thank you very much. He will be greatly missed. Okay, before we get started, we have a couple of citations to present this evening, and we have a representative here tonight from the senator's office, so we'll start with... Come right up front, ladies.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jason King. I'm a legislative aide with Senator Fadman. Senator Fadman wishes he could be here tonight, but his brother came in from out of town unexpectedly. He's a pilot in the Army, so I'm here to present this on his behalf. And basically it reads, "Commonwealth of Massachusetts State Senate, official citation: Being known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Craft Roots Brewing in recognition of being named among the fastest-growing craft breweries of 2017 by the Brewers Association." Very impressive. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Stay right there. Stay right there. Representative Murray, do you have a citation?
Now, Mr. Chairman, I was a little bit misled about this evening.
Oh.
I heard that there was going to be a keg here. And I could fill up my blonde ale. And now I see clearly that's not the case. In any event...
We're sorry about that.
That's okay. I'll have to come down to Industrial Road and get filled up down there. So it's wonderful for me to be here and congratulate both of you on the work that you've done. It was a member of the board that handled your first application, which was something new for the town. It's very, very gratifying just to see how successful you've been and how much you've become part of the community and just a real important part of the town of Milford. So I too have a citation. This is from the House of Representatives. It's offering its sincerest congratulations to Craft Roots Brewing of Milford for being ranked number one among 50 small and independent breweries from across 25 states as the fastest-growing craft brewery in 2017 by the Brewers Association. The entire membership extends its very best wishes, expresses the hope for future good fortune, and continued success in all endeavors. It's given the 7th day of May. Signed, Robert A. DeLeo, offered by Brian Murray, state representative, and thirsty patron.
Congratulations.
Let's take a sip of water.
We're going to connect the water fountains to the Craft Roots Brewery. You can just fill up here.
Thank you very much.
That's an idea. Oh, don't leave.
We have another one from the Board of Selectmen. So for the general public, if you haven't been to the brewery, you have to go. I've been there three times now. I've tried, but I can't get two beers down before I say I better get myself home because I'm not going to be able to drive home. It's a great place. It's a lot of fun. It's unique in that you can bring food in, you can order food in, so it's a lot different than a restaurant, but the brewery itself, to get a tour, is fascinating. Fascinating. I still say I wish that someday we can get it down on Main Street, because those vast and big glass windows on Main Street would be so impressive, so impressive. But again, from the Board of Selectmen, we want to congratulate you, and we have a citation as well. Being known that the Board of Selectmen hereby offer their congratulations to Craft Roots Brewery in recognition of being named among the fastest-growing craft breweries of 2017 by the Brewers Association. On behalf of the people of Milford, the Selectmen extend their very best wishes and express the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all your endeavors. Given this 7th day of May, 2018. Signed, Michael K. Wells, Chairman, William D. Buckley, and William D. Kincaid Jr. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. You earned it.
Thank you so much. Couldn't do without your support.
National award is very impressive. And next, we have the Medal of Liberty Committee to do some presentations. Mr. Scandoni and Mrs. Morgan?
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much.
We noticed that O'Glory was tired and worn, and this caused our committee to feel quite forlorn. We decided to purchase a new flag for you, but instead of one, we're giving you two. O'Glory and the state flag will stand very tall as they adorn the stage of Milford's Town Hall. As these flags are put in place, they will shine with admiration and abundance of grace. We all feel very proud that these flags will be viewed by many, a crowd. On behalf of the Medal of Liberty Committee, composed of Peter Scandone, Vincent Sephardi, Jerry Edens, and myself, Joanne Morgan, we are very happy to present two new ceremonial flags, poles, stands, to the town of Milford, and they will make their first public appearance on May 20th, 2018, as 43 families are honored at the Medal of Liberty Ceremony for the sacrifice that their loved ones have made for our freedom. Please join us on that day at 2:00 P.M. for an eventful ceremony.
Thank you.
This is the new state flag, and Peter has the new American flag.
Wow. Very nice. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your... Thank you for all your hard work. Okay, first agenda item is signing of the warrant.
Move, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the warrant?
I'll second.
And I would vote in affirmative. Second agenda item is approval of the April 23rd, 2018 minutes.
Move, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that.
And I would vote in the affirmative as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't want to put anyone on the spot here. I just, before the Medal of Liberty folks go, maybe they can talk about the event, if they don't mind, just to...
Sure.
If there's any additional plug or anything, because I went last year, and it was probably one of the most moving things I ever experienced, and I understand this year from running into... Running into Vinnie at one of the coffee shops, and I got to tell you, he educated me on what this year might be like, and I just didn't know if...
Absolutely.
Maybe we could share some of that while people are watching, because I hope people can make it, and I know you're having it here at the bigger venue, and...
Thank you for that.
Oh, no problem. Thank you, Joanne.
You're welcome. We invite all the citizens of Milford to join us on May 20th, 2:00, in the upper Town Hall, for a ceremony that is one you will never forget. We are having a touch of brass entertain us before the ceremony, and they will also perform during. Milford High School is sending a quintet to do the Star Spangled Banner, along with boys that will do taps at the end of the ceremony. The Italian vets will start off the program by posting the colors, and the Milford Community Chorus will sing several selections throughout the program. These 45 fam... 43 families that will be honored are coming from Florida, Virginia, New Jersey, and other places across our country to accept this award in behalf of their loved ones that were either killed in action or missing during World War II, Korea, and the Vietnam Conflict. There's a total of 59 that are going to be awarded, once we count the eight that we did on Veterans Day, and a couple that we have to mail to the families to... that couldn't be with us that day. But I think the most heartwarming thing of all was the research that we did to find these people. Many of them were killed in 1945. They had no brothers or sisters. Their parents are long gone. So we spent many hours, we made many phone calls, we made many connections, and got a lot of new friends, and I feel blessed to work with the other members of this committee. It's a hard-working committee. We've accomplished a lot, and I think it'll be something that you will be very, very happy that the town of Milford is doing this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Okay, next agenda item is invitation to speak. Mr. Rhodes?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Selectmen, thank you very much for allowing me a moment or two to address you at this time. As you are all aware, very much so, state law says that state money associated with students whose school choice in to the Milford District is included in the district's budget. For fiscal year 2018, that amount will exceed $600,000. And as you are aware, state law says that money associated with school... with students whose school choice out to another school district is to be paid by the Milford taxpayers, not from this budget of the Milford School District budget. Since 2006, the total amount of dollars paid by the taxpayers of Milford to subsidize school choice out has exceeded $10.7 million. For this fiscal year alone, the amount of dollars to be paid by the taxpayers of Milford to subsidize school choice out will exceed $1.2 million. To put that in perspective, the taxpayers of Milford have paid over $1.5 billion, $1.5 billion, to the Milford School District since fiscal year 2007. And to be exact, the number is $514 million, and that actually excludes fringe benefits and other services. It is the intent... It is the intent of a group of town meeting members at the upcoming town meeting to amend the school budget to deduct the $1.2 million, representing that amount of money that Milford taxpayers will have to pay to support school choice out. While I recognize that any budget deduction can be viewed as a statement of non-support of the school district, nothing could be farther from the truth. This amendment is only being made since the school district will have less students to teach, and as such, the school budget should be reduced by a commensurate amount and the money not fostered upon the taxpayers of Milford. Of course, I'm glad to take any questions, and thank you very much. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Hal.
Next agenda item is public hearings, and the first one that we have this evening is Skewely Corp. doing business at South Side Byron Grill. Good evening. How's everybody?
Mr. Chairman?
That's a view. That's a view from those seats.
It's deja vu all over again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You may recall, last year, my clients, Steven and Suzette Skewely were before you to transfer the all-alcohol license to a corporation called Banners for the business on South Main Street, and that occurred last year, I think it was about June or so, that the transfer actually went through. There was a pledge on the license to the Skewelys as the new buyer was supposed to make payments for the business to the Skewelys. That unfortunately did not occur, and in fact, the owner failed to pay many bills to liquor distributors, to the town of Milford, to the taxing authorities, to the landlord, right on down the line, such that the restaurant that we once knew as Skewely's Pizza Bar effectively was abandoned and closed its doors, I think at sometime in December of last year. My clients have been working very hard to repossess, if you will, that license, and we did in fact arrange for the principal of the Banners Corporation to sign over a voluntary surrender and repossession, which should be part of the documents that was submitted to the town as part of our application. And also, the Skewelys have been working hard to identify the outstanding creditors and in fact are paying out of their funds bills that were owed most recently, or I should say currently, to the state, to the Department of Revenue, to the tune of about $15,000 in back taxes that Banners was responsible for and that my clients had to pay to go forward on this. And it was quite a process to get the state to understand that the business was in fact abandoned, or else that tax bill keeps accumulating, accumulating, accumulating. So we are here tonight to ask the board's approval for the transfer on this repossession of the license, if you will, and the Skewelys intend to reopen the restaurant with the name of the South Side Bar and Grill. I think if you look at the paperwork, essentially the intent is to carry on the business as it was for a number of years, as a very successful pizza bar, limited entertainment, I think a pool table, your pub-style fare, and really just kind of bring it back into the community as a... as an operating business. Right now, you've got a landlord who, you know, has not gotten paid rent, although the Skewelys again started that as of May, and we've got an abandoned storefront on South Main Street. So that's essentially what we're trying to do.
Okay. Well, before I open it up for discussion, we do have a department head review form, building commissioner, allowable use, town planner, okay, no change of actual use, tax collector, no outstanding taxes, town treasurer, no liens, fire department has no objection, and from the police department comes no issues or concerns. With that, I'll open it up to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any questions. I think the business is known to us, the manager is known to us, the proprietors are known to us. You know, the thing that we would typically have, and I just don't know what's changed, if anything at all, Representative Murray, is that who are the... what's the principal owners and titles and positions? I don't have that, and I don't know if anything's changed since they last had possession of it.
Yeah, nothing has...
Nothing has changed.
Nothing has changed.
We're the owners. Sue and I are the owners, and Sue will be the manager.
Okay. All right.
They're 50% owners of the Skewely Corporation.
You represent 50... I'm sorry, 50%? Fifty-fifty. Fifty-fifty. Okay. All right.
And then Suzette is going to be managing.
I know, and would be very capable of the manager, so I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman, everything else?
I don't have any questions either. I'm sorry what happened and the experiences you had, but from a patron standpoint, I'm glad you're back.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions either. Wish you the best. Go right ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the request to transfer the license to Skewely Corporation.
I second that.
And I would vote in the affirmative as well. Thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you very much. Brian, are you looking for us to vote on these two licenses while we're here?
I think that's part of the application, yeah, so you might need...
Go ahead.
Two seconds.
Oh, you don't actually have to. Sorry.
You sound like you're done.
I'm so excited to go to baseball.
We transferred the common vituella, right?
Yes.
So we'll make a motion to transfer the existing live entertainment license?
Second it.
I would vote affirmative.
Thank you, Will. Good catch.
No problem.
Thank you.
We'll go again.
Sorry for the confusion.
Will wants to use that pool table.
Thank you. I need a lot of practice. Bye.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Next public hearing is Mass Electric Company in Verizon of New England. Anybody here from Mass Electric, or...
National Red.
Yep.
National Red.
National Red.
It says Mass Electric.
Yes. You've been with us before.
It's my first time.
This is your first time?
First time. This is Pazio.
Welcome, Chris.
I used this was supposed to come, something came up.
Sit right down.
Fill in.
Okay.
So, good evening. I am here to request permission to install... to relocate pole 82, 83, and 84, 10 feet to the east, and install a new pole, 83-5, to service the new gas station on Cedar Street. Also for permission to lay and maintain any underground laterals that would be desired by petitioners for distribution purposes.
Excuse me for asking this question. So what are they, building a new station where the existing mobile station is?
I believe it's a new station, and then also it appears the town will be widening the road...
Okay.
...in order to add a left-turn lane onto Dare Street, so we will be making improvements and relocating our poles to assess the widening of the road.
Just beyond that.
Right near 495.
I don't have any... I don't have any questions, but what I'd like to do before we get too far is to see, because it's a public hearing, if there's anybody here to represent the general public, or anybody who would like to be heard.
Anybody here that would like to be heard?
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one, and I think I have the answer, because I think it would be marked on the map. This isn't resulting in any additional poles or double poles or triple poles or anything like that. Ones are being officially removed. You know where I'm going with this. Ones are being removed and relocated. Are we going to have any surprises that you know of while you sit here in the hot seat?
Well, as per the agreement, Verizon's responsible for removal of all poles. We will install the new poles, transfer all our services, we'll cut off the top of the pole, Verizon will then come, they'll transfer their services, and they'll take the old pole away. So we have a notice of excavate... we have the notice that we send Verizon, and we try to work as best as possible to get it out of the way quickly.
No, no, but I appreciate you explaining that process, because I know Rick and I have been going back and forth, because I have a few that are haunting me and some folks. Broken poles, but it's come back to Verizon, and I have one that was cut off. A neighbor of mine has three poles in the yard, and one was cut months and months ago, and it's still sticking out by six feet, so... But that's not your issue, so I'll just leave it at that. So, thank you. No, 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 no. Don't worry about it, no, you guys did your part, so I appreciate that, but we'll get back into communication with Verizon. I don't have any additional questions.
Okay. Just help me for clarity, a little bit the location. I'm having a hard time with looking at this map, and maybe you're not the guy to explain that to me.
Well, it appears that we have three existing poles, and we'll just be moving them 10 feet to the east so we can widen the...
And where are the three existing poles? Are they like by Wendy's? Are they...
It's right where the 495 off-ramp meets Cedar Street.
That's the first one?
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay, now I got you. Okay.
Going northbound. That's a northbound ramp on.
Okay. I have no other questions. Motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Do you approve?
Affirmative.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. Good evening.
Next agenda item is our scheduled appointments, and the first one is, boy, I'll miss this name, Gene's SLL Entertainment License. I hope that wasn't too bad, Gene.
Not bad. We have problems with it ourselves. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. Go ahead.
We're looking to have our license for live entertainment. We're looking to have some dinner music and Friday's and Saturday evenings.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
You go right ahead.
You already... you already have one, or is this for a new license, or you just...
No, this is...
Okay, it's a new license.
New license, correct.
All right. Great. I've been by, I think it's terrific. Hopefully you guys are doing well, so this makes sense.
I hear good things and great food.
Yes.
And you're looking for live entertainment, but let's just clarify what you're looking for. You're looking for hour... your hours of operation. So I just want to make sure the duration of the permit.
We would like to bring Vin Halen in for the first night.
We're looking typically for acoustic guitar, a one-person type situation, soft music to go along with the dinner. As you know, the facility we have is a multi-purpose facility type situation. It's going really well, but we have the evening part where, you know, enough of the TVs, enough of the sound, just enjoy a nice dinner with some nice background music. And again, when you have the... we have a beautiful system there, but the radio gets tiring, especially when you just want to sit down and enjoy a dinner. So it's something we want to do. We have the area for it, and Vin Halen will not be coming.
So I'm just trying to figure out the hours you're looking to... I want to just know what we're approving, because I'm inclined to approve, in part because of the reputation you have and earned when you came in here, as a result of, you know, people feeling welcome, whether they're golfing, doing the golf simulation or not, but the food and the service is really the things I keep hearing about, so I hope that doesn't slight any... anything else you're trying to do. And I'm inclined to, you know, obviously support any way I can that business growing, and you've described a great evening for somebody who might want to participate, but I'm just trying to figure out the hours.
Okay.
So...
I wish I had an exact hours for you.
They're written, right? They are. Sundays, is that 7:00 A.M.? Or is that just...
We open at 7:00 A.M.
Yeah, I think this is... they're confused by the hours of operation versus the time you're looking for the permits...
Right.
...for live entertainment. And my suggestion is to be broad, and I'm not your attorney, but to be broad towards the type of entertainment you're looking for, and there may be times you want to bring in some live entertainment, especially acoustic guitar, where you may have a unique event, and so you want the opportunity to be able to do that at 11:00 A.M. to closing or something would be a suggestion. I just want to put parameters around it.
I hear exactly where you're coming from. So give you a little background on our business and how we have it set up, how it works. Obviously, I was golfing all weekend, but I golfed outside. You know, it's the season to be on the outside courses.
Yeah.
So we get limited activity in the inside situation.
Sure.
If it's a lousy weekend, obviously people will come.
Yeah.
So the situation is... So the situation is that we also had some activities where we had some demos, showings, this, that.
Sure.
We brought radio stations and the whole nine yards. I felt uncomfortable about bringing the radio station in, but it was just a one-day promotion, because we didn't have that live entertainment situation. So I can see at times where that would fit into the early afternoon, et cetera, et cetera, but I'm not looking to bring a guy. Typically, you hire somebody, come in, they're gonna do a two-and-a-half-hour, three-hour gig, that's it. So, you know, you're talking about the dinner time hour, the six to nine, six to ten type range, and that's the best I can tell you. I certainly don't think we're gonna have somebody there midnight singing with a guitar, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, but I didn't wanna preclude it if you had an event, wanted to leave it as open-ended. And so I think where the confusion is on the application, we can do a better job as we learn to improve our processes, too. I think where it talks about days of operation, days and hours of operation, it would lead you to believe that as the applicant, what hours are you open, and really what the board is looking for is some direction, and it's not clear on this form as to the hours that we're approving the request for live entertainment. So I don't wanna, I don't wanna scuttle anything, I wanna be supportive. So do you have something else that you'd like to have live entertainment, and is there a wide enough area where you consider? I mean, can we go twelve to twelve, and then you're not limited, and if you needed to amend that, you could come back?
I think that would be perfect. I don't see, I was gonna suggest something like that.
You're probably gonna be less than that, but I understand. But I don't want you to be prohibited from that. All right. So with clarity, Mr. Chairman, it looks like the application, we look for twelve to twelve, and it doesn't seem restrictive in any way, and it seems to accomplish what the owners want to.
The question I have for you is this, is this changing the existing hours on your existing license? Are you lengthening on the other? So the hours are staying the same.
Correct.
You're looking to, from within those hours, have cut out time for you, where you can have live entertainment.
Correct.
So the hours of operation of the business are not changed, not at all. You're just looking to have some clarity and time to bring in live entertainment to, as you just said earlier, sir, offset the people that are now going outside to play golf instead of inside.
I wanted to come back with their wives and have dinner.
I'm gonna get there as soon as I can, from what I'm hearing.
Well, and I have to say, you know, everything that Sid and your family does is first-class, so I have no concerns that it won't be the same.
Thank you.
For a motion?
Yep.
Well, you know what? Let me read this department head review form first. You deserve it. So the building commissioner, no problem. Planning board, approved. Tax collector, no back taxes. Town treasurer, no outstanding tax liens. Fire department, no objection at this time, and the police chief, no issues or concerns. So great job, great job.
So with, Mr. Chairman, with no issues or concerns, their taxes, no reason other than to be supportive of this family and this business, I would make a motion to approve a live entertainment license, and let's do this right, so there's no confusion. Twelve to twelve, twelve noon to twelve PM, each day of the week.
I'll second that.
And I would vote in affirmative as well. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sorry for that confusion. We should fix, we should fix the form.
You should have been more thorough.
Thanks. Good job. Good luck.
Okay, next scheduled appointment is Chipoli's Mexican Grill. Somebody here from Chipoli? Come right forward, sir. How are you?
Good.
Right ahead, sir.
Okay, my name's Christopher Musella. I'm the area manager for Chipoli Mexican Grill. We're opening on Milford and the Route one oh-nine from Medway Road, the new Plaza. Grand opening is gonna be Thursday. Here for the common vitular license.
Says he attached, and nothing's attached.
Yeah.
I have You've got that one.
Actually, I don't have, oh, I do have a complete applications for a new license, common vitular. All right.
So again, I'll review the department head form, department head review form.
Yeah.
Building commissioner, acceptable. Planning, no problem. Tax collector, no outstanding taxes. Of course, there's not town treasurer, no outstanding liens. Fire department has no objection at this time, and of course, the police department, no issues or concerns.
And Rick, for benefit, what would typically happen for new businesses, subject to Board of Health review, is where our.
Is that been taken care of? You all settled?
Yes.
Okay, so that's done.
It was part of that.
What, health has come down and done their inspections?
They came down, did the pre-inspections. Yep, they're gonna come back. Yep.
It'll be subject to that, but if that's been done, we'll double-check that.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Why don't we just make it subject to?
Thursday?
It's a restaurant.
Wednesday's our friends and family.
Okay, I'll double-check that tomorrow.
Okay, so why don't we, why don't I structure a motion that approves a common vitular license for Chipoli and grill number three one one seven, and make that subject to final approval by the Board of Health, which Rick can check on, on our behalf.
I'll second that gladly.
I would vote affirmative as well.
Outstanding. Good luck.
Good luck. Welcome to Milford.
Yes. Oh, thank you, thank you. All right, it's a hearty.
You're welcome. Take care.
Next scheduled meeting is simply orthodontics, one-day entertainment license. Evening. How are you?
I heard from a mutual friend, Carol.
Yes. So on behalf of the orthodontics at twenty-one Main Street, we are working to just get a one-day entertainment license. We're looking to do a combination of a summer kickoff event in the parking lot and do kind of a patient appreciation with also maybe drawing in some new patients. We're looking to have a DJ from two thirty to six thirty PM on June thirteenth, which is a Wednesday afternoon. We do have a date considered outside of the sun yet. That would be the only time the DJ would be there.
Turn up for the board.
Mr. Chairman, my only comments are that's, that building and that business has done an awful lot to help our Main Street, help beautify an area that was otherwise very, very rundown and blighted, and, you know, I'd like to, with a representative here, take advantage of the opportunity to say welcome and thank you, and I see nothing that, you know, I'm happy to make a motion to approve that license, or that one-day request for live entertainment.
And I'll second that.
I just have one question. What made you pick a Wednesday?
We know Friday's around that time everyone's heading to the Cape, right, and then we had to check around prom schedules, and there's a lot of end-of-the-year school activities, so we thought Wednesday would be, would be good, and we're hoping it's gonna turn out good as well.
Good luck, I'm sure it will.
Didn't have anything to do with the traffic, did it?
Uh, no. We're hoping that that doesn't cause them a problem, but I think it will be okay.
Thank you, and I would vote affirmative as well.
Great, thank you so much.
Have a great time.
Thank you, good luck. Tell Carol I said hi.
Okay, next agenda item is the IDC. Evening, gentlemen.
Hello.
You're up.
I'm John Gelsic, senior planner with Beals and Thomas.
I'm Rob Bullock, member of the IDC.
Everybody knows Rob Bullock.
He's way too tan for this, this early in the season.
And sunny.
It'll balance out the tan.
That was good. Okay. Wanna have them start?
Yeah, I was gonna say, go ahead with your.
Sure, so we undertook a IDC study. It was really a two-part study, one of them looking at IDCs in the region, comparing Milford to the activities and the makeup of those, and the other part being a GIS analysis of the developable industrial land in Milford, Hudson, and Marlborough. And the report that I believe you guys have in front of you is the report identifying the different IDCs and how they operate, the summary analysis of the land study, and recommendations for the IDC moving forward.
All right, are there any high points you'd like to hit tonight?
Um.
The elevator?
I believe the, one of the high points is that Milford is pretty well-developed already, so that could be a low point, because there's not much land left to be developed, but to be developed as it is is definitely impressive compared to some of the other towns around the area. The IDC recently has, you know, re-upped their membership, and they've been taking control of their board and starting to do some preparations for moving forward, and that's very commendable. Mr. Bullock being one of the gentlemen who's part of the board that's, I believe you're new, correct?
Relatively, yeah.
So there's some, many new members that are really geared up to actually make some improvements.
So just a question, Rob. When you say the board is under reorganization, it's part of the reorg that when you came on, or is it movement again now?
Yeah, I mean, just several new members, even since I've joined, you know, getting more people to show up on a regular basis is a big thing, and it talks about that in the report. So potential, you know, John did an excellent job, was at multiple meetings, and, you know, we talked about the fact that the industrial land is pretty much developed, so we should focus a little bit, be more of an economic development council, and, you know, we had craft routes here today, and, Mr. Chairman, you said yourself, we'd love to see you downtown, so can we do something where we offer incentives to businesses to grow? To, everyone I talk to, you know, talks about downtown. What can we do to grow it? So our, can we make some shifts to our board itself to help with that, reach out to local businesses, see what they need from us? So those were some of the things in there that, you know, John had highlighted and we all agreed upon.
And one thing to note is that the IDC as it is established in the charter has that ability to act as an EDC, just not in name. So it would take a town meeting, warrant article, to change the name to the EDC, but they can accomplish the same thing as an EDC just as they're set up currently.
It's not limiting as it's structured today?
Correct. I think we'd have to, you know, come to you, get some guidance, get your suggestion and feedback, and see what's gonna work best moving forward, but, you know, I think it's time for maybe some changes and shifting.
Well, I think you can see in our support of the old St. Mary's High School sale to be renovated into over fifty-five condos, and, you know, you saw the article in the paper and the rendering in the paper. It's gonna be beautiful, it's gonna be beautiful, and those are the kind of things that we need to bring back to Milford, you know, the center of town, you know, to revitalize. You know, we talked about it that night. People are gonna, they'll walk.
Yep.
They'll walk uptown, they'll walk to churches, you know, they'll walk, just in general, create good activity in the center of town, so it's projects like that that are really gonna help bring this, you know, the center of this community back, you know, back, so.
And I think everyone talks about we need more parking. You know, you go downtown at night, everything's dark, maybe a couple more restaurants, but they need parking. There's things we need to do to make it attractive for more private business to invest downtown and make it grow.
And Rob, you make a valid point, and I think about this every night, well, not now, because when I'm coming home, it's light, but, you know, let's use the winter as an example. Once I get to the police station, I really slow down, because even though we have those nice streetlights, the center of town is so dark, and people are just stepping out from behind cars. It was about two months ago somebody got hit right by spalones, you know, and all it was, was the person coming down, you know, Main Street, didn't see him, you know, because it's a dark, dark area, you know, so that's a, that's a great idea, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I think from the Beals and Thomas report, and I actually wanna start earlier than that, and I apologize for having to go through a story here, but I saw some of the same observations that you had made relative to the organization structure associated with the IDC. So one of the first things that I came in, I think it was soon after you arrived, Rob.
You joined us.
Yeah, and it was, seeing a lack of traction is the best way to put it, and organization. What I wanted to do was, rather than commit this board, or even myself as an individual, to support a steady budget, I've been a longtime promoter of initiative-based budgeting, and so tell us what you want to accomplish, and it isn't until, it isn't until we see traction, so it's, it can be self-fulfilling. What I wanted to do is put on the table for that board, Town Administrator Rick Vilani also helped in preparing warrant articles that allowed us to give that IDC a shot in the arm by getting a study like this conducted to say, here are some of the things possible. But my, my point to initiative-based budgeting is, what I wanna see are initiatives, what I wanna see is things that would, the group would like to accomplish before we just look for flat budget submissions. So I encourage and still say that's on the table, at least from my perspective. I don't mean to speak for my colleagues, but I would go to the wall for that type of discussion for when initiatives come forward. But the other thing is, I think it's time, and long overdue, that we hit some of the things that are on this, this recommendation. And so I would say organizing and administering the monthly meetings with a new chairman needs to be started as soon as possible. Preparing an agenda, assuring a quorum, making sure the records for the meetings, update to the boards of selectmen, showing the progress and the types of activities you'd like to begin, because it isn't until some of these mechanics happen, begin to happen, where people will look to the IDC to connect with them to, in an effort to make things happen. So that would be my recommendation, suggestion is follow the blueprint and come to us when there's an initiative that where help is needed, but I think, I think overall, the coordination with Board of Selectmen is another piece of it that's vital. So if you take these recommendations, and starting with the basics and the low-hanging fruit, I think it starts with reorganization, and then coordination with the Board of Selectmen on any initiatives, and I would start with this as your blueprint, going back to the study that was commissioned and funded by our legislative body, Town Meeting, to get experts involved and benchmark what other communities are doing, where they're successful, why they're successful, and how we might be able to leverage that information. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. No, and I can echo everything that Bill said thus far. I was very impressed with the report. Rob, obviously, I mean, you're here presenting it as your board. As far as you know, just representing tonight, happy and pleased with the results of the report?
Yeah, absolutely.
It's pretty thorough.
John came to multiple meetings, got feedback, you know, there's some give and take on some areas, but I would say yes.
Okay, good.
Rob's not even chair. I don't mean to.
No, no, when he's here, I know.
Standing in for the chair, right?
Well, that's why I just, you know, he's here tonight representing them, and I just, I was, I read it, I read it a couple times today, and I was, I was really impressed with it, and I think right now you have a board that's behind you, folks. We also have a very active downtown revitalization committee. I have something to mention tonight under, under Old Business for a Future Agenda item about a gentleman that they introduced me to recently, and maybe moving forward, something, I just think that maybe at some point, as you said, getting direction from this board, coming up with your own ideas, following this as a blueprint. Also, we may, again, we have the, we have the different silos, and a lot of, a lot of stuff is going on right now to revitalize Main Street, looking at it from townwide. I mean, you mentioned Main Street two or three times just in the brief presentation. We're talking about it here. We have three members of the board, so the entire board is some, this is a priority to all of us, so I think, you know, this is the time where you should be getting the most support that you and your folks need, and I just wanna say that. I think you know that, but maybe we can, again, put them on the agenda to get the, them in here as well, just so we can talk back and forth, or maybe you can, you know, if you want, feel free to invite us to your meeting.
Following your reorganization.
Yep.
That would be a great time to introduce the new members and talk about some of the new initiatives.
And the fact that, and the one thing, and you mentioned it, the one thing that I didn't realize was that we can act pretty much in the economic role of an, what's it, economic, economic development commission, right, the EDC? Because those have, I always thought they, just like a redevelopment authority, they have, legislatively have their own. they have, they're legislatively have their own authority, right? And, and ability to do things, but the IDC and an EDC is interchangeable, or?
Not necessarily, but, um, basically the way that it's set up in the town of Milford, they can do certain things, basically general economic development, rather than just industrial development, is how it's written in the charter. So they have the ability to look at economic development as a whole downtown, uh, certain commercial districts, rather than just industrial districts.
Okay. Because that's what, when you, when you, and I, and I appreciate what you had mentioned about Hudson and Marlboro, I, I knew members going back many years of the Hudson Economic Development Commission, um, and, and some of the things they're benefiting from now, I think actually started many, many years ago.
They had initiatives around, uh, giving money to, you know, small breweries, to start up downtown, those are some of the things they were able to do. I might be mixing up the towns.
No, that's correct, yeah. So the, the Hudson EDC is not really an authoritative body, they're more of an advisory committee, much like Milford's IDC, but they brought these opportunities to the Board of Selectmen to work together and bring those businesses and, and opportunities to Hudson. And I think Milford is in a great position to do similar, similar type things.
No, that's great, and I thought it was very promising. Again, knowing that we have different, different groups working in very similar, similar roles, I'm just, and I don't, I don't say that to make it sound redundant, I think this is a really good time to just keep pushing this, this type of stuff further and further down the field, because we have a couple of, uh, active boards right now that are, um, I can't say enough about. I mean, they're coming up with good ideas, we're pushing forward, just like, again, they put, um, the downtown group pushed the, the, the taking of three buildings, again, for future parking perhaps, because that's what it comes down to. You also mentioned parking, if we don't have a place to park someday, how are we gonna expand businesses? So I just, I think this is an exciting time, I just think that we, we don't wanna get a report and then let it collect dust. We wanna use it, we wanna follow it, and that's not just on you folks, that's also on this board, to make sure we keep it a priority, so. But thank you for serving. Are you, are you folks have any vacancies now? Are you looking for additional folks, or, or do you have a good?
I think we have maybe one or two, I'll, I can double check on that, but, uh, you know, certainly, if there's more people that are interested, we'd love to hear from them.
No, especially, I mean, again, I, you know, you want, uh, you know, everyone talks about having, you know, eclectic ideas and a diverse representation, but I gotta tell you, it's been, I've been twenty years involved in, in, in Milford politics, and to have all, a lot of these different boards and commissions and ad hoc committees on the same page, it's unheard of. So I just wanna say that that's such a positive, and I really appreciate, Rob, you just wanting to be on it. Tony, I don't know if you wanna come up and join, um, I'd love to have you, especially you're the, you're an IDC member and an active member of the Downtown Revitalization Committee, and I just think that, um, you know, this is a, this is, again, a perfect example of two different groups, really, singing from the same hymn book, so. I don't know if you have anything to add, I?
Well, excuse my tardiness, but, uh, the only thing I have to add is, if it wasn't mentioned before I got here, you know, as a member of both the IDC and the Downtown Partnership, excuse me, the Downtown Revitalization Committee, uh, we have mentioned that we need someone to support our planner, uh, in aiding him to get additional monies, revenues from, whether it's the state or the federal government, uh, to help us implement these projects as we start them. And, um, we had mentioned trying to get a, a full-time grant writer, whether he's in a position with the town, or he's a consultant for the town. Uh, we met someone as of recent that, um, maybe could do one or the other, um, so we appreciate your support on that.
And in all fairness, I'm gonna bring that, um, up to the board under New Business. Um, I was able to attend one of their meetings and met, uh, an individual that, um, already has a proven track record here in Milford, uh, through grant writing for the youth center. Um, and I had the opportunity to, to meet with him and, and hear him out with, along with the committee, and, um, you know, I just wanna see if we can maybe get him, I wanna talk a little bit about him, but maybe get him on the next agenda as well, and I would like some represent, representatives of the IDC here as well. Again, I think collectively, rather than, you know, just leaving everyone in silos, seeing if we can actually, you know, let's start, uh, you know, I don't know, informing people at the beginning, rather than playing catch-up after the fact. But that's all, that's all my questions, great job, thank you very much, and Rob, thank you for being here, Tony.
So Rob and Tony, I don't mean to put you on the hot seat, but I know I'm right, uh, and Rob, you and I have had discussion about this in the past, in that, um, there's nothing more frustrating to me than when people wanna get onto a board, they wanna get involved with the committee, and then we can't get anybody to take chair or vice chair. Has, with the new people on the board, is, in, in, are we, are we gonna reorg, reorganize, reorganize the board? Because if I'm not mistaken, because nobody took chairman, chairman defaulted to the town planner, correct?
Correct.
So we're working on, nothing against Larry, he's got his hands for, um, but we are working to make this an actual board with a chairman, a vice chairman, and a secretary.
That's our goal.
Okay.
Uh, we haven't had someone step up to the plate and wanna take the position. I, I've been a vice chair for a while, but I just don't wanna take the full responsibility of being the chairman.
Yeah.
There's a lot of hats he has to wear, he's, he's both secretary, he has to put all the, uh, the meeting notes together and post them and everything else, and I'm, I'm already on another board with the downtown revitalization. I, I have a limited amount of time, I have to work myself, so I, I try to give my best to both boards, but I don't wanna take that title unless my friend here wants it.
And again, I don't mean, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but to Will's point, if, if it's not set up properly, you won't get the traction you need going forward.
No, I agree one hundred percent. I mean, not to throw Larry under the bus, but he wears too many hats himself, and it's just, it's just too much for him to do.
Yeah. Chairman's a lot of work. It is, no matter what committee you sit on, it's a lot of work, but it, in order for the committee to function properly, it's gonna be set up properly. And I hope that that's something, again, I don't mean to put the two of you on the spot, but I hope that's something that you, you definitely can get settled ASAP, you know, moving forward. I think it's imperative, um, I like the recommendation in here, that you should meet periodically with the Board of Selectmen. I think that's imperative, you know, because you need our support, and we need, we need to hear where both, you know, those boards are going. And, uh, I go back to what I said earlier, you can see with our support of the old St. Mary's High School into the over fifty-five condos, you know, we're pro, we're pro, you know, business and we're pro-development, you know? We, we want the downtown, you know, and not just the downtown area, but the town of Milford to thrive and keep, continue to keep thriving like it is presently. You know, you made a valid point earlier that although it may be a negative that there isn't a lot of industrial land yet left to develop, the industrial land that has been developed has been done very, very well, and that's from years and years of great, great planning, so I just wanna say thank you, you know? Thank you, great job, and anything that we can do, you know, the three of us are here, but if you could please work on getting your committee organized and set up properly, that would be great.
Absolutely. We have some great ideas that we had in the past that we never able to go forward on, that we hope to persuade you guys to help us out with.
Great, yeah, okay.
I mean, it's not just, um, bringing new business to town, but maybe it's repurposing old business, old properties for new use, et cetera, uh, whether it's a traffic situation that we have to, um, address, that we've all known and been aware of, you know, for last twenty, thirty years. We can maybe revisit back the old, uh, um, alternative road, uh, that's still all in place with, with, the town owns the majority of the land. Uh, we had a, uh, an opportunity at one point in time to buy a section of that property to, um, complete it, but we, we passed on it, but hopefully in the future we may rekindle that.
I think that was even predates my involvement in this board.
Yes.
Yeah.
Anything from, uh, a two-way Beaver Street to that, uh, which also helps, uh, businesses that are back on that Beaver Street area, and it, I think it's gonna help that, that whole intersection right now is a, is a nightmare, um, because of the new redevelopment of the Kmart Center, uh, all the traffic is, is one big congestion, can't take a left on to, uh, Kmart anymore, now you have to go to the light, and there's no left-hand turn, turn signal, it's, it just has to be, something has to be done there, and I, I guess you guys are probably aware of it, and hopefully something's being done, other than through us, to help implement some kind of a cure to that problem.
Yeah. I agree, Tony, I was coming home this evening and the traffic, so you think about that, that was about five-thirty. It went up and, or heading towards the old super stop and shop, and it was bumper to bumper, bumper to bumper.
Because you can't take that left-hand turn.
Right. I came out to go, come to the six o'clock meeting tonight, took a right out of Prairie Street, stopped, all the way till I got through, I thought, well, once I get through the light at eighty-five, it was bumper to bumper, all the way to the traffic light here at Town Hall. The congestion is just, it's amazing, amazing, yeah, those are the kind of things that we should look.
And also the right-hand turn on Cedar Street from Main headed, uh, west, uh, it's, there's no right-hand turn signal there.
Yeah.
And tractor trailers can't make that radius turn, and I, I know we've done studies in the past to purchase the old Gibbs station, uh, to correct that problem, but I don't think anything's been done to this point that, as well.
Well, you know, things have been done. As a matter of fact, that has, that land hasn't been released from a DEP contamination site. Yeah, we had our council look at that. So there's, there's some areas in town that represent, uh, what I would consider some significant risk. Uh, when we consider the old Archer Rubber as an example, when we consider the Gibbs gas station, and the significance of their leak and the test monitoring wells, I don't think that the DEP has ever certified that site. Have you heard anything more?
I'm not, I can't, I'm gonna fall off, but I don't.
So I wanna say, things have been done, um, and they can make the claims that they, they would like to represent, uh, you're in real estate, you understand that, uh, claims can be made by owners that aren't necessarily a hundred percent accurate, um, but we did have our attorney look into that, and I think the asking price beyond that was somewhere in the order of three-quarters of a million dollars, so not only was the price silly, but, uh, the, uh, the, the fact that their gas leak at that, that location, uh, represented a risk, 'cause we could, if we could buy it for a dollar and it costs us ten million to finally finish off the, uh, DEP contamination concerns, that wouldn't be a benefit to the, the community at that, at that cost, so.
Understood.
So I just wanna let, when people represent that nothing has been done, we looked into it, so.
No, and I just wanna say too, that, uh, I think it's imperative that, and we've said this before, that, and, and, and Tony represents some things that were mentioned many years ago, and just in the past, and then in the recent past, nothing should be off the shelf. I mean, so whatever we're asking, we're asking these folks to serve, they're willing to serve, you know, whatever recommendations they make, we should, we should discuss at the very least, and if we can support, we should, if we can compromise to get to some consensus, we should, um, because I just think that this, again, the timing right now is, is, is quite good.
Yeah.
And for the next few years, I think we need to accomplish as much as we can, so.
Yeah, I think number, you know, just as an example, and it's been said, just as an example, Will, but, uh, when we look at, uh, the bullets associated with item six and number nine, I think, you know, it'd be great to see a reorganized IDC come before this board in a month, and, uh, have a draft outline for the types of goals and objectives, and I, and I would encourage you to work with, uh, the, uh, ad hoc group that we created for, uh, Ron, and the group you're on, I'm trying to...
Oh, Downtown Revitalization, yeah.
Downtown Revitalization, um, to help mutually develop those goals. See how many of those can be adopted, that you can put under your umbrella or together work on, um, because that's a powerful force. But I, to the point that was made earlier, I don't know that they're gonna get any traction without a reorganization, and some specific goals that come out of this.
And to Tony, to your, to your point, uh, in one of my opening statements, I, that's what I talked about, is some of the blighted properties that are in this community, and what, what can we do with them, you know? If we don't start to look into them, you know, and I used the old Gibbs gas station as an example, I said, you know, you come to Milford for a wedding, we have all these beautiful, beautiful churches, you come into town on a Friday night, you accidentally get off at eighty-five instead of one oh-nine, and the first major intersection you really come to, you look to your left and you got that, you know? So, you know, but to Bill's point, you know, when was the last time we did check into it, you know? It might be something, you know, I think, that you could, you know, follow up with, I know that I am, I know that I am, so. But I just want you to know, we're here to support you, and, uh, you know, we want you to succeed, which is kinda dropping a, just a couple of subtle hints at you, but.
And as a matter of fact, this report was the chairman's article, was the Board of Selectmen's article to help, uh, get that going, so. Yeah, I agree.
I'd love to take that position, but, yeah, at this point.
No, we appreciate, everyone's got families and jobs, and, you know, this is, this isn't anyone's full-time job, so we appreciate you just serving, so.
Yeah.
We'll get there.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for your support.
Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Take care now. Next scheduled appointment is our Finance Director with a budget update, Mr. Zach Taylor.
Hey. Hey, Zach. How we doing tonight?
Good, thank you, very good.
So last I was in, we're talking about a lot of the articles individually, what they mean, and, uh, how they were in line with goals and objectives and whatnot. Since then, or at that time, the Finance Committee was still wrapping up budgets, they were still reviewing some of the articles. They got through it, but they did a fantastic job. I thought this was a little more difficult of a budget year than years past, but overall came out really good. Though, since then, we had an opportunity to have our financial team meeting with some internal staff, along with Chairman of the Finance Committee, Chris Moran, and yourself, Chairman Mike Wolf. At that point, again, most of the articles were, if all the articles were vetted, the budget had gone through, um, FinCom looked good to the Selectmen, looked good to us. So at that point, it was really trying to determine, uh, two things. One, how we're gonna fund them, this particular town meeting, but secondarily, really how we're gonna stay on point to meet the remaining goals and objectives with, uh, I hear, you hear me say all the time, really happen in October with our special town meeting. But I think a lot of our success of meeting those goals happened with being aware of them and trying to stay on target, and that's exactly what we primarily did with our financial team meeting. Uh, I did write a letter to you guys that outlined what the meeting was, but I'd like to just go over some of the highlights, if I may. So over the past five, six, seven years, we've been stressing that we're trying to keep capital for the October meeting, doing that purposely, because we know what our actual funding costs will be at that time, we know what's available to us, and we're able to kind of back into it. And upfront, we've been earmarking, if you will, one point five million for capital, and I think over the past few years, uh, capital planning has been really well, too. A couple exceptions this year for capital, we got three articles that met like the special circumstance criteria, made sense to do them now rather than October. However, part of the discussion that we did have was taking the one point five million earmark and reducing it accordingly. So we're going into October with one point three million roughly for capital. Um, once we get through this town meeting, we'll be back to really go through some capital highlights. Uh, I think we may have to move some things around, but we still seem to be pretty good on target there, I'm not too concerned. What we did talk about, and this is in line with what we've been discussing all year, we carried two million in free cash, and we purposely did that, one, to be able to clear the snow and ice deficit, which we will do, stands at approximately four hundred fifty thousand right now, and second, that any monetary articles that would come up would have the availability to take care of them as well, and that's very important, because what it does is keep the levy or taxes solely for the operational budget at the annual town meeting, and then allows our earmarks to fall into place at the special town meeting to be able to accomplish our goals. So those articles totaled just about one point two million. We have two million in free cash available, so leaves approximately nine hundred thousand. So once six-thirty does come and go, that free cash also will come and go, and it just won't be available until I recertify it. But I wanted to take opportunity to mention that revenue is really on point, collection rates have been fantastic, so I don't really see any issues on that side. We have some known surplus accounts at this time, too, that I totally expect will remain surplus, so all indication is that we'll have a decent free cash balance, which is great. Early in the year, one of the big goals we set was main... Early in the year, one of the big goals we set was maintaining our levy capacity, which again is not taxing to the complete limit authorized on the Proposition Two and a Half. We've had that tradition here for, for probably predating me, you know, for a long time. And that number's jumped to a staggering three point two million, which we've been able to maintain for three years in a row. And right now, despite what you'll see on the balance sheet of a number closer to two point eight, it's because I'm purposely not using any free cash, just cause we don't know, although I just did say, I guarantee we will have some. So with that said, I think we are right on point where we need to be. The budget came out good, we'll, we'll cruise through this town meeting, we'll get, we'll jump heavily into capital, we'll do what we need to do there, and then October will come along. I really, truly think we'll hit our target of three point two in excess levy, we'll hit our target of a half million in stabilization, and we'll be able to handle our capital. So it's come together really well, and I think we're definitely in good shape as we cruise into next week at town meeting.
You remember, Bill? Yeah, I mean, this is, we're following the, the roadmap. The roadmap established by this board, FinCom, the, the Director of Finance, Treasurer, Town Administrator and others. We're following the roadmap. And so where did schools come out this year?
The percentage?
Yeah.
I think it was four point, four or five, yeah, it was.
Four point five.
Four point five, yep.
All right, and has that gone through FinCom review?
Yes, it has.
It has?
Yep.
Okay, cause I knew that was a ball that was up in the air, in a, in a large port, obviously, a large portion of our budget.
It was originally around five two, coming in at four or five at town meeting.
Yeah, okay. I, I, I say okay, only that I heard it was at some point, three eight.
Oh, the, the projections we used were, you're right, was, was three eight.
Yeah, there was a different number that first came out of the school committee.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't wanna make it sound like a windfall, but at the same time, you know, we're taking care of our snow and ice deficit early in the spring, right away, putting that away at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Everybody knows it was a tough winter. And the only concern, Zach, and if you could talk about it, I know you can't predict it, but it's volatile, injured on duty. If people keep striking our officers, frankly, it's, it's, you know, either, the, the last couple incidents have been brutal accidents and we're lucky nobody died, either through, as a result of people being charged with drunk driving or a result of people who are not licensed to operate a vehicle. So where, where do you, what's your comfort level in your risk assessment of the IOD, knowing that we just had another one?
So if you, if you recall, and at the last meeting I did talk a little bit about this, on, on the goals and objective sheet we put together, I did identify that we need to keep an eye on that.
Yeah.
With this go-around, this town meeting, it seemed to have sufficient balance, and that's primarily due to a large third-party claim coming back. And when we set that revolving, that special revenue fund up, it allowed for that to come back.
Replenish.
So that, there you go, replenish it. So that basically, maybe comfortable to think that we can wait for the next town meeting in October. However, based on everything you just said, I totally think we're gonna have to replenish that as well.
And doctors are getting better at diagnosing concussion protocols, the impact is violent, hitting airbags. And if anybody saw the pictures of the, the vehicles in la, in the last few, I wouldn't have wanted to have been a passenger. It's amazing people are alive walking out of that.
Absolutely.
And, you know, I don't mean to talk, you know, you know, like in code, but I'm, I'm thankful that two brothers, frankly, are alive as the most recent incidents, the Sousa Brothers, while, you know, in the last case, Steve Sousa was on duty and injured on duty. So people go through an awful lot and people don't realize the months and months of rehab that they go through to get back on the force. So we wish them the best. Uh, look, I, I think you've got a handle on everything. I did have a concern about injured on duty, and I just wanted to ask you about that. And you said, we'll relook at it in October.
Yes, yeah, I, I think we probably will be looking to appropriate some money, but as of right now, we'll be, we'll minimally be good until then.
And you think election equipment, playground and freezer fall into that realm of special need?
Yes.
Okay, I'm comfortable with that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Zach. I don't have any questions either, Bill addressed them. Good job, I liked your reference, again, Bill, to the, to the roadmap. I think, again, we're staying on the same course. I know the numbers change, obviously, at times, but I think you know what the priorities are from this board and the goals and objectives. And you've, you do a great job at making sure we, we get what we need and want. And, and, and making sure that we can, we can pay for it and still, it's always been a priority, obviously, to, for the taxpayer relief. So you make, you've made that happen and, again, drawn the map out so that we can accomplish that while making sure that none of our departments are going without anything that they actually need. And we're comfortable on the capital side, so I'm quite comfortable. So good job.
Thank you.
And of course, I was fortunate enough to sit with you and Rick and Tom and Paul the other day for almost an hour and a half. So I don't have any questions for you, cause I had all my questions answered the other day. But I did have to say this to you, I, I think that, you know, your department, you know, and I'm gonna say, when I say your department, I mean everything, the treasurer, you know, accountant, the accounting department, talented people. I was so impressed the other day in that meeting, particularly with, you know, with all of you, but, you know, when there was a question that came up, the way that Paul would answer the question, and then sometimes the way you would jump in and kinda make it easier to, to expl, understand. And, you know, Tommy's fairly new to the town, I think he's doing a phenomenal job. And I think the people in the community that, that are not involved necessarily around the town need to know how fortunate they are to have this department watching their money on a daily basis. And like I said, to sit there with you the other day and have you explain to me, this is why we just, we need to, to Bill's point, the roadmap, we need to follow this direction, because this is where we need to be. And then in October, we'll come back around again and, and, you know, we'll, we'll address it here. And that's what the October town meeting is for. You know, your spreadsheets are unbelievable, so easy to understand. So I just, you know, from this Selectmen, I just wanna say thank you. I think, I think you all do a great job and, you know, as, not only as a Selectmen, as a taxpayer. Makes me feel very comfortable to be in this community, knowing that my money is, is being managed properly. So thank you very much.
I think my crew does a great job, too.
They did, they really did.
Yes.
We're very fortunate to have everybody, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy night, Zach.
Take care, Zach, and thank you for everything.
Nice job, Zach.
So a real quick shout-out, my, my son pitched a phenomenal game tonight.
There you go.
So I wasn't sure he was gonna make it back.
All right, next agenda item is the Town Administrator's report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, four items tonight. One, I've been notified that the town has been awarded a grant for municipal drinking water and wastewater facilities in the amount of thirteen thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. This is through the Mass DEP's Clean Energy Results Program with the support of the Department of Energy Resources. This is in recognition, recognition of the town's commitment to installation of renewable energy and energy efficiency measures. These measures reduce energy use costs and reduce emissions of greenhouse gases to the benefit of our community and the environment. I've also been notified by Fire Chief Tui that the new ladder truck is being delivered this month. It'll be coming from Pennsylvania. It will be delivered in Hopkien, there will have finished work and graphics completed, and then hopefully it will be in operation. I have been informed by Representative Murray's office that he has secured the fifty thousand dollar local earmark appropriation for our Regional Substance Navigation Program and also the fifty thousand dollar local earmark appropriation for improvements to the Fino Field Pool. We thank him for his efforts on these two items. And then finally, Mr. Chairman, I was asked to provide an update on the Wendy's drainage issue. I've been informed that representatives from Wendy's, including their facilities manager, a civil engineering firm and a site contractor, have been addressing the water drainage issue at their facility. Following the last storm, the site contractor was on-site, water was pumped down in the driveway area. Also, the day after the storm, their civil engineer was on-site all day evaluating the drainage system. They also had three five thousand gallon pump trucks pumping water and sludge material out of the system. They are preparing preliminary design options, which will be presented to Town Engineer Mike Dean for resolving the drainage issue. Once the design options are reviewed and approved by Mike, Wendy's representatives will prepare permit and construction documents for permits to proceed with the repair, or if deemed needed, a full replacement of the system. So talking with Mike, he feels that Wendy's is now engaged and now seeing how serious the town has been with this issue and will be looking to resolve the system to the full, if a new replacement is needed, a new system is needed, excuse me, then that's what they'll be obligated to do. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, tonight.
Bill? Yeah, good work by Town Engineer and yourself, I know, Rick, you were involved, Building Department was involved in the Wendy's issue. The Wendy's issue is much bigger than a little lake at the, off the entrance of Dill Street. And, and folks need to be clear, and Wendy's needs to be clear, and it took a long time to get their attention. They need to be clear that if that, that entrance and exit is not operating, if people are then forced to exit in an unsafe way across four lanes on eighty-five. So I wanna make sure, and I wanna get written confirmation, that Wendy's is aware of the issue and it's between Building Commissioner and the Board of Selectmen. I wanna make sure that they're clear that that business is to close if that entrance isn't, isn't operating correctly. So while I appreciate your optimism, the amount of time it took to get them engaged, I think you'd agree, was far too long. And you stuck with it, and the Building Department stuck with it, and our Town Engineers stuck with it. But if they're not operating to the site permit and they're putting horses up across their entrances and forcing people out onto one entrance, exit that was never intended to cross eighty-five, then they're operating in unsafe way and we have an obligation to protect the safety of the citizens and visitors. So I wanna make sure they're clear, and I'd like to get written confirmation that they've received something, that they understand the orders. And whether that comes from the Building Commissioner, is it, is the appropriate authority, that's fine. If I knew there was agreement on that, I just don't know if we have their attention, my colleagues.
I think it was very well said, no, no, and you're right, it took a long time to get their attention, and Rick has stayed on that, and, and I commend that. But, no, Bill, I think you're absolutely right, so.
Yeah, and we've got another document in front of us I'll bring up under Old Business, about another unsafe condition. So I wanna talk about that a little bit, but thank you, Rick, for the Administrator's report, nice job.
And I think another poignant aspect of Wendy's is how did it get that bad? How did it get that bad? How did they let it go that long and get that, that, that fire out of control that it became a safety issue to the people in this community, or people in general doing business with Wendy's? And I can give you my personal opinion on it, cause nobody was paying attention. Nobody was paying attention until we started to force their hand, they realized that we meant business as a community, as a Board of Selectmen. And, and now we need to stay on them. And if that means that we don't feel that they're, if they're moving forward correctly, we bring them before us. Bring a representative before us, bring them face-to-face and let them know how serious we are.
I think it was easy for them to put horses up, Mr. Chairman. I think it was easy for them to not consider the implications of not meeting the site permits and not, and forcing people out of an exit that should have was never designed that way.
Right.
It just became, I think it became the normalization of deviance is what it really became, where they normalized a bad situation and continued to look at it for way too long, so.
Yep.
I, I agree with you.
Yep. Again, Rick, thank you very much, good report, thank you. Next agenda item is Old Business. Rick, do you wanna do yours first?
Basically, the only, the town meeting articles are once again before you. I think you've covered most, if not all of them. One last opportunity, although we will schedule a meeting, whether we have it or not, the night of the, uh,
Town meeting.
Town meeting, thank you. But again, just there for your, if there's anything else the board members can bring up, if not, then I think.
Mr. Chairman, I have no more to bring up, if the other members, other members do.
But you said you had one thing under Old Business.
I do under Old Business, I was just thinking about town meeting articles.
I'm sorry. Yeah, after, after last week, after last meeting, I'm quite comfortable, too.
We supported our department heads, we supported the board's recommendations.
Right, right.
But I do have other things, so whenever you're ready, okay. So let's see, we received correspondence, and this is in regard to a safety situation that was brought up, and I brought up the last meeting about Stop &amp; Shop. And there was discussion this evening about the difficulty at Stop &amp; Shop. And so the chief gave us a report in response to that, and I think it's important to highlight something that came out of that. It looks as though there were twelve crashes from November first to April twenty-ninth of eighteen. That's in comparison to six crashes in seventeen in the entire year of twenty seventeen and nine crashes in the entire year of twenty sixteen. So when I look at some of this data, I say we're on track to quadruple previous year's totals.
Absolutely.
And so I have a few questions as it relates to that. One, is the current developer in compliance with our site permits and with the recommendations of the Planning Board? Two, more importantly, who's gonna head this effort up? Because we just talked about a situation where the board's gonna send a very clear message to a, to a business that they can't operate outside their site permit without creating a safety problem. So I think, Rick, your recommendation was that the Town Engineer head up this effort?
Again, I think the chief did what he was asked to do, but I think he now is looking for the Town Engineer to deal with the issue of the traffic light traffic. I think the chief's, I don't have the report in front of me, unfortunately, but I think the chief was in agreement, no, no, the no-left turn could be an issue. And I think the chief's also in agreement that we should look at the signalization. And I know Mike has been, Mike Dean, our Town Engineer, will follow up with that.
Okay, so.
I think the three of them need to be involved, but at this point, I think it may shift to our Town Engineer.
Town Engineer, Town Planner.
Yeah, oh, Town Planner also, yes, the same person.
And the Police Chief.
Correct.
All right, I don't know whether the Building Enforcement Officer is involved in. And I also think this report, I'd like this report to go to the Planning Board.
Cause they, they approved it as is, so.
And I don't know.
They should be kept in the loop and.
I could send it to the Chairperson.
We've got a safety issue? We cannot wait for a re-signalization on Route one oh nine to prevent accidents on Route one oh nine in front of that plaza. So in the interim, while we contact the state, and everybody knows how long that can take, and we've got a serious and immediate threat to people's safety, wanna see the next plan. And what I'd like to do is get an update every two weeks so the board can review it at their meeting, cause this is a serious situation.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I can, and, and Bill, I think this just backs it up further. I think if we need to, we should also get Representative Murray and Senator Fatman, along with District Three and MassDOT, if necessary, to make sure that people know it's a state road, but it's.
That's a great point.
It's, it's a safety concern, and we might need some things expedited.
Yeah, we need some help, we have a problem, and they should receive this report, that's a great point, Will, I'm sorry, I'm glad you brought it up. Apologize for not thinking of it. Where, I don't know where we are in budgets and where we are in line items, but this is real. The data's telling us we have a threat to people's safety. Intuitively, or I should say anecdotally, we knew that we were hearing about a lot of crashes there. So it's, it's time to put a solution in place, even if it's a two-day solution. That is something that handles the immediate issue and something that handles the long-term issue, whether it's the roundabout that's been proposed. issue, whether it's the roundabout that's been proposed at that intersection, or a dedicated left turn arrow.
Yeah, but some of those things, we should be able to, I mean, on Beaver Street, we have that control. I mean, there are some things that, in the chief's recommendations, that we should do, the low-hanging fruit, the signage, checking the designated lane, if need be.
Signage is awful, currently.
Well, I was gonna say, that's one, there's two things that I'm hearing, is that the signage is, there's only one sign on the other side of the street that you can't see.
Other shell.
Right, that you can't see, and so people are using that entrance. So, they're cutting across lanes of traffic again, and then there were people coming out that don't think there's anybody coming in, so they're not looking for an incoming car, because they're looking to turn right to get out. You know, so you got people using it as an entrance as well, instead of, like, they're supposed to go to the traffic light, wait for the light, take the left and left inside, you know? But the parking lot itself is challenging.
Russian roulette, right now.
Exactly, it is.
Darting across those lanes.
Right.
And we, we should not have an approved plan that if the owner is following it, has patrons to the businesses playing Russian roulette to get in.
Right. The parking lot's all jammed all the time, too.
So, somebody needs reprioritization of work. I would say safety is number one.
Anything else?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. I did say no, and then, I did. Oh. We did get a memo from Mike Dean regarding a feasibility study for Phase Two of the regional approach to the EPA's MS four permit. And it says, "The Town of Milford, along with the Towns of Franklin, Milford, Towns of Franklin, Medway, joined together via a three nineteen grant from the state to continue efforts in the analysis for feasibility of the benefits of possibly taking a regional, regional approach to address and meet the requirements of the EPA's MS four stormwater permits." So, I wanna be just clear about a few things, and it was without support that folks are looking for regionalizing a multi-town governmental board, while at the same time, we are in litigation with the DEP over their schedule and approach to this, while at the same time, we're supporting legislation that would allow the Mass DEP to take over the federal EPA's mandate for stormwater permits and requirements. There's a lot happening, but I just wanna make sure we're giving clear direction to our personnel that are looking into a multi-town regional MS four grant and effort, that they better sync up with their selectmen, because I, for one, would not support a multi-town effort whose sole purpose in life is to frankly tax businesses and, and taxpayers for the rainwater that falls on their roof and parking lot. I got the impression, the last time we met with Franklin and Bellingham, that they were already resigned to it. We continue to support our litigation, which we should get an update on, and, I don't know, just not something, I've, I've seen towns try to back out of regional approaches to town government, where you get three towns all trying to make political appointments and running their own, you know, quasi-government from, from three different communities. It's an incredible burden, an incredible nightmare, and frankly, I'm not sure that I wanna participate and would like some say in this, so, these are our folks. I would say run, don't walk away from that. That would be my direction, but I only represent one vote on this board. That's my last update or comment that we received correspondence on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well? Thank you. I have a couple things. Rick, can we check in with National Grid regarding the lights on Commercial Way and Industrial Way? We had the brewery here tonight. I brought this up a couple of months ago. You talk about a dark, a dark street, a dark public way. Never mind, Amazon's up there now and everything else, but just the, the patrons that, that we care most about that are going back and forth, especially to the brewery, that even after tonight is gonna get even more publicity and hopefully continue to do even better. It's, I mean, you're, it's bad up there.
Yeah, it is.
So, I'd like an update on that. Also, I know I kinda put the young man that was here today on the spot regarding National Grid. If we can also check on the, the pole that's actually broken in half.
I did follow, there's some engineering that needed to be done. That was...
Okay, I appreciate it. I just want you to stay on it. It's right in front of Mr. Allegratz's house at the top of Silver Hill Road.
I spoke with him myself, Tony.
And it's, and, and I drive by it, obviously, six times a day. It's actually getting worse.
Yeah, and, and it's a legitimate concern.
Okay. And I know, actually, and you, when you got back to me, National Grid removed all of their, their responsibility from that.
Yeah.
And then, just right along the same street, I have a neighbor that has five poles in their yard, three in one corner, and they, they lobbed it off, but it's still, you know...
I'm gonna set up a meeting with National Grid, Verizon and Comcast again. Only reason being, one, issues like that, but, two, it's all new people. Everybody's left. Bob Russell's gone, there's a new Comcast rep.
Okay.
And there are new Verizon reps, so I'm gonna get them back in. I think they worked pretty well the first time.
Okay.
And, and also, we're gonna maybe revamp the report again, because I think you can then, you can see the National Grid might've done their thing, but maybe one of the other utilities did not, so.
Because, and, and that broken one in front of the Allegratz's house, I tell ya, I've never seen anything like it, where they're using these four-by-fours bolted into, literally a pole that's broken in half and hanging over a very busy intersection at the top of Silver Hill Road, and it's, I mean, it's moving. So, do we have to wait for it to land on someone's car, quite honestly? So, and I don't use that tone with you, Rick. I know you, you're on top of it. I have the emails, but, you know, if it falls down, we're gonna have a much bigger problem.
Right.
Yep. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Rick, I only have one. I think everybody driving by the youth center seeing that sophisticated scaffolding out there, and working on the building. I wonder if we could have Mike Dean, maybe even Brian, come before the board, just kinda give us an update where they are with that?
Okay, they're actually in the process of repointing and, and correcting that issue. I was actually there on Friday, you know, went up on the scaffold and everything to see exactly what they're doing, but we can, very, no, very low-key, not, not, not too, not too much. I don't like, I'd...
But it might, it might be worth them just to come in and kinda get the board an update, if you don't mind.
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
If you don't mind.
Yeah, not at all.
You know, it's a beautiful building now, we renovated it, let's, let's make sure we take care of it.
So, you didn't climb to the top and take a selfie?
No, no, I didn't go up that high, no.
Okay, next agenda item is "new business." Looks like we have Veterans Department is looking for us to okay a parade permit.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the Memorial Day Parade request from John Pillar, our Veteran Service Agent.
And I'll second that.
And I would vote in affirmative as well. And the next one is the Fourth of July Committee Acceptance of a Gift. I don't see the gift in here, Rick. Oh, let's check.
I have input.
I got it, I got it, thank you. I was wondering what you were doing sitting upstairs.
He's wearing his other hat tonight.
Good evening, gentlemen. Good evening. Go right ahead, sir.
Um, no, we were just, I was talking to Zach a couple of weeks ago on how to go about handling the situation with the gift that you guys said you would give us, and he had told me that you guys had to actually give us the gift to put it into the count, hence why I'm here tonight.
Okay, so this is a gift...
No, this is actually a gift from JCAC Enterprises.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, this is that, that...
I, I apologize. What I was under the impression is that, that the two thousand dollars that you guys were gonna give us for this committee was gonna be part of the situation tonight. Maybe I was misunderstanding.
What is it? Because this is a sponsor for the Fourth of July, so is this the...
We're accepting this gift on behalf of the town.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Joe, I had no...
Okay. I think there was just some confusion, though.
So, this is a gift to the Town of Milford for...
Yeah, the board needs to vote on the gift.
For the Fourth of July parade. Okay, can I have a motion?
I'd move to accept that generous donation, and I'm not familiar with JCAC Enterprises.
Um, I'm not familiar with the, with the LLC, but Jason and Christine Shadler are very involved parents in town and just a really nice family, locally-owned business owners.
Yeah, very nice.
And then they, from what I'm told, too, they plan on having a rather large and extravagant float. I have no doubt. Fingers across.
Good for them.
Yes, and they're good friends of ours, too, so they're...
That would help kick off our...
They're helping us out.
Effort outstanding.
Quite generous. I'll second that as well.
And I will make a vote in affirmative as well, and say thank you very, very much to the Shadlers for the...
Just, since you are here, I have spoken with Zach, and we were looking to see where we're gonna get that, and then that, yes, that will have to come from this board to, to...
Okay, that's, yeah, that's what I thought this conversation was for.
Where it's coming from, yeah. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Thank you, guys.
Sorry you had to wait so long.
Ah, come on, it was a pleasure. You lie well. See you, Joe.
Correspondents? No? Do you have any correspondence, Joe?
I don't.
Will, correspondence?
Uh, no, but I do have some "new business."
Go right ahead.
I mentioned this when I was, I was asked to attend the Downtown Revitalization Committee, and they had brought in the chief consultant at Tilrock Consulting LLC out of Rutland, and it was actually a gentleman with Milford roots, Mitch Resiti, who...
Very impressive.
I imagine you've met him because of...
Yes, the youth center.
The youth center, great writing. He's been pretty successful with them, which he, which he provided with me. So, Rick, I'll forward you the email with the attachments. I have a hard copy I'll pass along as well. But I did just wanna read a quick letter that he had sent to me after the meeting, and I'm hoping that, you know, if, if so inclined, the board might wanna have him in. I know he was already procured through the town, but I think, you know, we meet, we talk, we figure out, you know, how we go, how we could go forward if we actually think that, based on the Downtown Revitalization Committee, as well as the Industrial Development Commission, that, you know, I think we need to get back in the business of grant, of writing grants. We did extremely successful for many, many years, and that was with the Community Block Grant that the state operates with federal funds that they receive through the Office of Housing and Community Development. But we were told some years ago that Milford pretty much tapped out those resources. I don't believe that's the case anymore, and, other than the Community Block Grant, which I think Milford was laser-focused on for over twenty years, there's a lot of other sources out there for grant money, and I think we either have to get serious about that, or, quite honestly, move on. I think there's money out there that we're missing. I don't believe that that should be yet another hat that the Town Administrator wears. I think grant writing is something that some people do really well at. That's all they do, that's their expertise, and that's what this gentleman, who might just be one example of many folks out there that we could procure, but, actually, I'll just share this with everyone, I won't, I won't, I won't read it, but I'll just, I'll say this part: "He said, 'Over the past twelve months, twelve months, Mitch is responsible for raising nearly six million dollars for nonprofits and municipalities, and has an intimate familiarity with funding sources, including federal, state, local, and private foundational and corporate opportunities. Tilrock Consulting understands that project funding and development is a process, and looks forward to working with you to achieve the shared goal of community growth.'" And I think the fact as well that he has Milford roots, it means something to him still. So, if we can, I'd like to share this with you folks and see if we can possibly get him on the agenda for a future meeting.
I think, Rick, to be honest with you, that I'd like to get him on the next agenda.
Maybe May twenty-first.
And, and my main reason for that is, I have a couple of reasons, so that everybody can meet him, because he is a very impressive individual. He has helped the youth center quite a bit. But more importantly, what we were talking about earlier with the IDC and the Downtown Revitalization Committees is that we need to show them, you know, that we, you know, we're here to help, and they asked for some help with grant writing, and let's bring, you know, Mitch in, let's have a conversation with him, so that the people on those committees will say, "Wow, the Board of Selectmen really is moving to help us and move forward," and maybe that'll help them with their little concerns of reorganization and, you know, maybe they'll realize we're serious and to help them, and, you know, they'll move forward.
Okay.
All right?
And even the, the rate sheet, if, if Tilrock is, you know, would possibly even be considered, he attached the rate sheet, which, again, considering what we pay some consultants, sixty-five dollars an hour plus mileage is pretty modest, considering the amount of money that we could, we could make back. So, I'll send that to you, Rick, and...
Thank you.
He's got a very impressive background, his fires grant, right?
Yeah, I was, I was very impressed.
Very, very.
Thank you.
You're welcome.